We have two items that we will be working on this evening. One has to do with the Swan Meadow Advisory Committee Findings Report. And the second will be an opportunity for anyone who wants to speak regarding Swan Meadow, will have the opportunity to speak. Certainly, you must sign up on a card with your name and the items on that card. So I'm going to turn it over in a second to the superintendent, and she will give us the ground rules and how we're going to proceed. But before I do that, I think all of you probably know, or at least most of you know, that the superintendent has indicated to us that her last day will be June 30th of this year. She will retire after many, many, many years in the educational system of Garrett County, everywhere from a teacher all the way to the superintendent and all the steps in between. So with that, certainly, we were startled that she was wanting to retire. We'd not seen that coming, but we certainly wish her the best as she enjoys those grandchildren and the things that she will do. But we have been very, very fortunate to have Barb as a part of our system from the beginnings of her career to now the end of her career. So thank you, Superintendent Baker.
Thank you very much.
With that being said, I'll turn it over to her, and she will lead us through the ground rules.
All right. Good evening. I also want to thank everyone for coming. I do have a couple of housekeeping items. We would like everyone to sign in, please, if you would, if you have not already done so. The sign-in sheet is at the front table. Also, if you would like to speak during the public hearing portion of this meeting, we ask that you fill out this card so that we will have a record of who spoke this evening, and Mr. Woods will call the speakers by this card. The meeting will not be livestreamed by the school system, however, it is being recorded, audio and video. The meeting will begin with a presentation by the Advisory Committee Chairperson, and our policy and procedure states that the presentation is made to the superintendent. However, the Board of Education members wanted to see the presentations firsthand, which I think is great, and so they can hear everything from the chairperson themselves. Following the presentation, we will begin the public hearing portion. You will be able to speak directly to the board members. Again, if you wish to speak, please complete the card. If you fill out a card and then change your mind, just indicate that to the board president when he calls your name. After the public hearing has concluded, there are some refreshments that have been provided for you. Thank you. Finally, I would like to address the recent announcement of my retirement. We have received several inquiries as to whether the many decisions facing the board will be postponed, and they asked me to kind of remind people that in public service such as ours, people are coming and going. There are lots of transitions through elections, resignations, and even retirements. But the board will discuss the process for hiring a new superintendent at the regular monthly meeting in March, which is next week. There are a number of considerations they'll be discussing. My hope is that the process will continue because the issues that are facing us as a school system remain the same. If anything does change, however, we will publicize that as soon as possible after that meeting. Okay? Are you ready for the... All right. If we are ready... Are you ready? You're going to speak first. Okay. Here we go.
So I'm not on the committee, but I am the Swan Meadow PTO president, and I was asked to lead in prayer before the meeting, as that's how we do things in this community. So let's pray. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity of gathering all under one roof here this evening with the presence of the Board of Education, and pray that you would be in this meeting, give us all clarity of mind, give us wisdom as we discuss and look into the future of the plan for education for our children. I just pray that your presence would be here and would be felt in these names. Amen.
All right. I hope my loud teacher voice doesn't blow you away, but want to say thank you to everyone who is here this evening. It means the world. The Swan Meadow School occupies a unique role within the school system as well as in the culture of Garrett County. Although it is not located in a municipality or a town, it is a community school in the sense that it is prized by the households it serves and draws upon a great deal of community participation. Since 1892, this school has been an integral part of our county. For multiple generations, Swan Meadow School has connected people from all walks of life. The attachment that the community has for the school was made evident in listening and feedback sessions throughout the RISE Plan and Strategic Facility Plan developed in 2019.
Enrollment numbers in Garrett County have been declining for the last 12 years, since 2019 COVID. Southern Middle's enrollment is down almost 10%, Yacht Glades at nearly 8, and Swan Meadow is down 25. These numbers represent a decline across the board as more parents seek alternatives to public school education. The numbers above represent the current enrollment at Southern Middle, Yacht Glades, and Swan Meadow. Utilization at Southern Middle is currently at just under 56%, Yacht Glades at roughly 81, and Swan Meadow at 64. If the current students at Swan Meadow were to move to those schools, it wouldn't affect the utilization by very much. Oh, I forgot a slide. I'm very tired. So when the borders were created for Swan Meadow, it didn't stabilize enrollment. The borders were developed after literally driving the bus route of one year, didn't include most of the households in the valley of the children that could go to our school. The road directly next door to the school is not even included in the area. So those children have to get an out-of-area form to go to school right beside their house. If the students that currently lived inside the borders were attending Swan Meadow and more out-of-area requests were approved, the school would have a much larger enrollment than it does currently.
So the building conditions, the AIC Facility Maintenance Assessment. Facility Maintenance Assessment was completed on October 18, 2022, and Swan Meadow was given a score of 73.47%, which equals adequate. We have a breakdown of that assessment. And on the next slide, it is a little more... The first point is basically what I just said. And then Mr. Richard Waszloski, the Garrett County Board of Education Director of Maintenance, Facilities, Operation, and Transportation, said at the January 6, 2023 Swan Meadow School Advisory Committee meeting, quote, "The spaces in Swan Meadow School are adequate based on the school's instructional needs," unquote. And the big point here is that Swan Meadow School parents prefer their small community school that embodies their family values.
They gave me the easy slides. So the only two things I'd like to point out here, which aren't big numbers, is the internet piece. There's actually going to be fiber optic connectivity coming to Swan Meadow this summer. So we have a build start date of the 13th of April for that fiber project. Once that's completed, that will actually lower the internet cost, and the phone system can then be moved over to the voice-over IP system as well that the Board of Ed has. The others, you can simply read.
For the transportation changes, that would happen if the school was closed. Speaking with Mr. Waszloski, there would be no extra cost in transportation. The ride times for some students could increase by 10 to 15 minutes, but the bus routes are essentially the same. Yes, and I think you guys have a different copy in front of you, if that's why you're having a hard time following. K-8 students residing in the Swan Meadow attendance area would ride their current school bus either to Yacht Glades or Southern Middle. There'd be no change in the buses because they already go to those schools. Swan Meadow District boundary, again, like I said earlier, was based on only one school year's enrollment in 2015, so it does not include families who live on Mansfield Road, and that's just one example. There are quite a few that have to drive their children to school because they had to have an out-of-area transfer, even though they live right here in the valley. In the past, Swan Meadow School has attracted homeschool families that want their children in a small community school. Over 50% of the current Swan Meadow School students are parent drop-off and pickup. On the recent driver's manifest, the number of students being transported on the three Swan Meadow buses this year are listed as below. Mr. Waszloski didn't anticipate that number changing by much next year if the board voted to close the school. Bus 7 is currently at 50, 36 at 45, and 78 at 43, and it's pretty much just going to stay the same.
The educational programs at all three schools, as you guys all know, are basically the same. You know, we all have our ready. We all have those programs. So we just wanted to point out, take time and point out some of the unique Swan Meadow educational opportunities. No, we don't have a pre-K class, but that's because in this community, most of the families prefer to raise their preschool children and homeschool them at home for 3, 4, and a lot of even the kindergarten students are homeschooled and then join us. Our multi-grade classrooms, as you know, allows for remediation and enrichment of the multi-age student, and research shows, you know, that that is very effective. Our history of test scores show that this model is very effective. In grades 6, 7, and 8, again, in one classroom, all are middle school students together, and I've said it and I'll say it again, it allows these youth to develop their leadership skills, you know, while they're working and mentoring younger students in the school. They're role models to these younger students. Often, the middle school students plan school-wide events around Christmas time or Easter time or the holidays, and they plan them from start to finish. Field Day last year, they pretty much planned on their own. So it's a great, great middle school model, role model. K-8, it's, you know, I've loved teaching the kids, most of the kids here, you know, all nine years in math. It's just a wonderful program to, as a teacher, to walk in and know where that kid is, where they left off, where they are, what they need, you know, how to push them, how to excel them. And every teacher at that small school knows every student, knows every family, and it's just a great model for community schools. We love our community Christmas program. The room was standing room only fuller than it was tonight for our last Christmas program. Other public performances the kids do is at the harvest sale, they do chorus programs, Christmas program, Valentine, love gift distribution, and graduation in addition to the spring band concert. So the Maryland report card, Swan Meadow, the previous one, 2018, 2019, was four stars out of five with an overall percentage of 74%. I handed you today when I walked in because they just released the new one today, and we are... Our elementary percentile rank went up from 77 to 85%. The middle school went up from 96 to 97 percentile rank, and our overall total percentage went up to 77.4, so we're pretty excited about that in those COVID recovery years. We're also excited to say that Yacht Glades percentile rank went from 37 up to 52. They went from three stars to four stars, so, and improved from 59% to 62.3%. Southern Middle School, and again, for those in the audience, we tried to make a comparison between the Swan Meadow, Yacht Glades, and Southern Middle because those are the schools that the students, you know, would be transferring into. So that's why we keep referring to the three different schools. Southern Middle also improved from 45 percentile rank to the 76th percentile, three stars up to four, and from 52% up to 64.5%. So we're excited about that. In a public review site that we found online, it did rank Swan Meadow School as the number one rated elementary and middle school in Garrett County with a rating of eight out of 10. Math proficiency 39% with Maryland's average at 20% and reading proficiency 59%, Maryland average at 36%. Higher test scores attributed to lower student teacher ratio of 11 to 1, and the multi-grade classrooms that allows for remedial help and also challenges students to benefit from being able to move ahead. And hopefully, you'll get to dig into the MCAP test scores from last year at the board meeting Tuesday evening. We're real excited about those results from last year, so.
So racial composition. The racial diversity in Garrett County schools as a whole has been a low percentage for many years, so it's really not a big issue. However, Swan Meadow is unique in that our current culture diversity of Swan Meadow is at 63%. So we have 24 out of 38 students that are Amish and Mennonite, and that is something that is very unique to Swan Meadow School. There's very few schools like ours in the country.
Well, the elephant in the room is obviously the new weighted student funding mandated by the state and its effect on all of our schools. As you can see from the next page, that using that funding would have generated a total of $463,369 for that school for FY '23, for the 39 students. And that would not have been enough to make the expense for that school, which was $563, $544 students, for $544 for the 44 students. This was derived from the basically profit and loss statement generated by the Board of Ed. Unfortunately, with increased inflation and future mandated expenses by the blueprint, this will only get worse, and the revenue and expenses will widen. Thank you.
For the student relocations pillar, the PTO asked all of our parents directly, individually, what their plans would be if Swan Meadow closes. We have the luxury of doing that since we only have 38 students. Makes it pretty easy to do. In the folder that I gave you, there is a copy of each one of those forms signed by the parents and what their intentions are. The result of seeing those things, the number of students right now, because we actually got a new student last week, but it was 38 until that point, that will make two students moving to Yacht Glades and, I'm sorry, one student to Yacht Glades and three to Southern Middle. Students that are going homeschooling will be 22, students to private schooling 13. If you add that out, 35 of the 39 students are being removed from the public school system at the end of this year.
Going to springboard off the previous two comments. So just as saying, basically, we have signed documents stating 35 students will be leaving the system, and I'm also making the assumption that teachers and staff will not be fired. So if those two assumptions are actually correct, your expenses are not going to be lowered because you're going to keep the teachers, but you are losing revenue. So when you start talking about running a business, right, you want to increase your revenue and decrease your expenses, and I believe the next slide shows we're doing neither. So what I tried to do is basically pull out teacher salaries because they're being paid regardless if the school stays open or not. So we can take, we can basically take that very large number out of this equation. So I did that, and if you look, we're basically saying three students will be staying in the system if the school is closed, which would generate roughly $32,000 for the school system. Leaving Swan Meadow open, you actually generate $447,000, and subtract about $120,000 in expenses. So leaving the school open actually helps the system by $327,000, so.
I don't think we have that slide.
You guys, for some reason, have the previous copy of this report. When I got here, the one that's in front of you was on the screen, but it's not the current one. I have a copy in my hand.
Yeah, we don't have a copy of the current one then. Yeah, we'll need to get, we'll need to get those slides. Community impacts for Swan Meadow. With the closing of Swan Meadow School, the majority of the families will withdraw their children and future generations of children from Garrett County Public School System. This withdrawal decision is directly reflective of cultural values and beliefs. This will unfortunately put an additional financial burden on these families. This will also create an additional financial burden on the community at large and their ability to continue to contribute to those in need in the community and services like the local fire and rescue squad. Swan Meadow has a history of 73 years of the harvest sale of friends, family, and local communities coming together to support Swan Meadow School. Swan Meadow PTO annual love gifts to community members in need will be lost if the school We will also lose hands-on educational environmental gardening projects at Swan Meadow, such as the Butterfly Garden, the native wildflower meadow, the chestnut saplings, the vegetable low tunnel that the students plant, weed, harvest, and sell produce in the community and at the harvest sale. Swan Meadow School has been a local place for our graduates to come and earn their GED diploma. Swan Meadow Annual Community Christmas Program is held each December at the Pleasant Valley Community Center with standing room only, or at least last Christmas it was. Community families also come together for an annual school picnic, an eighth grade graduation. This is a big event. It's an, this is an annual community reunion with, which is another opportunity for local communities to unify.
Sorry, Jonathan, let me share these next two. The Kids Helping Kids Community Local Food Bank has always been a special and dear to my heart. The kids bring in their change. It's a great math activity. They come in, they count their coins. I collect my change all year long, and then the kids can count their change and then match with my change. Then I, the day before we go shopping at Stop &amp; Save, I take bags of money to the bank and get it cashed in, and the kids then pick out young, like, again, the older students pick out younger students who are shopping buddies, and then three or four of them combine their money, and we literally go shopping at Stop &amp; Save. And over the years, the kids have literally purchased 31,640 pounds, almost 16 ton of food that these kids in this community has provided to our local food bank. And Pastor Carl Flake wanted to be here this evening, but he's in Chicago, and he said, "Arlene, please tell the community and everyone that this school has made a tremendous impact on that food bank in helping feed hungry families in this community, in this county." So the other one is the St. Jude's Math-a-thon. They've actually did, started that even before I got there in 1989, and to date, they've raised $32,704 for that to help families like Fletcher's that's down there now. And this year, next month in April, we'll be doing it again, and we will be doing it this month in honor of Fletcher, so.
And then the harvest sale. So 1949 to 2022, due to the school's cross-cultural connection through the harvest sale and other community events, cultural stereotypes and misconceptions have been minimized, creating more unity within Garrett County and beyond. The diversity within Swan Meadow community fosters collaborative and cross-cultural relationships beyond its borders. This has impacted the community since the start of Swan Meadow School in 1892. The Harvest Sale is an annual fundraiser for each school year and provides for the needs of the school, including extracurricular field trips. 73 years of Swan Meadow School PTO's Harvest Sale would come to an end. Community members and many from the tri-state area meet and celebrate their support for a beloved culture and school. In addition to a delicious dinner, homemade donuts, fresh-pressed apple cider, and hand-pulled taffy, all reminders of our Appalachian home, an auction of fresh produce, dinners in people's homes, donated produce and services, handmade crafts, handmade quilts, and numerous other donations is held to raise funds for the school. Those funds are tallied, and the PTO then ties 10% to local organizations like the Oakland Volunteer Fire Department, Southern Garrett Rescue Squad, and also local individuals in need. The Harvest Sale could continue with all activities taking place at the Pleasant Valley Community Center, but it wouldn't be the students producing this event. Swan Meadow students and staff have and currently are involved in many missions, projects, reaching out to those not only in the community but around the world. Current substitute tutor Abigail Yoder traveled to Ukraine for a six-week mission trip. During her time there, she held a Zoom meeting with students from a rural Ukrainian school and the students of Swan Meadow. Ukrainian students introduced themselves and shared about their school culture and sang a traditional Ukrainian song for Swan Meadow students. Swan Meadow students then shared about the school and the community we live in. This event provided a very eye-opening experience for both schools. Swan Meadow students learned to think beyond, beyond the needs of just themselves and the community. They experienced another culture and language with children their age. This opened students' eyes to the trauma and devastation of war.
So the committee was asked to look at the impact of the students transitioning from Swan Meadow to Southern Middle School and Yacht Glades. So to go over that, we added the timeline here, and what this graphic illustrates is not only the transition from if this school were to close, but also with the grade band realignment. So there's a lot of stuff that, you know, is not, with all those things up for consideration now, not set in stone certainly. But the main thing to highlight from there is that 7th, 6th, and 5th grade would transition to Southern Middle School, and then all students at Southern Middle School would then transition to Southern High School, and that is in contrast to the normal, you know, 8th grade, 9th grade transition cycle, which we're in right now. And then another thing to highlight in the timeline would be the 4th grade class would be the first, the current 4th graders would be the first 6th grade class at Yacht Glades that would stay at Yacht Glades as opposed to coming up to the middle school with the normal time. timeline. So where we are in the transition process now as far as like students matriculating, going up is the eighth graders now are scheduling at Southern High School for that transition. And so we wanted to go through the process for how students go up to Southern Middle School. So normally what happens would be each elementary school spends a morning going through a tour and several introductory programs at the middle school. So a consideration would be for the students in fifth grade to join with another school such as Yaoklades or Bradford or Crelin. And that way they'd have another opportunity to have some peer-to-peer contact. Another thing then would be considered would be for those students that are in sixth and seventh grade to either, you know, come that afternoon. That'd be a decision need to be made how they would have their own individualized transition and opportunity for them to make some connections in that grade. There is a back-to-school night, there is a new students' night, and maybe an additional parent night would need to be added to the schedule in the fall and the summer for that Another thing would be ongoing services. Once that transit, once those initial scheduling things have taken place, normally through homerooms and clubs, students have kind of staff members that look out for them. I think some, the discussion was whether, you know, having a specific staff member assigned. That way each student can get involved in some kind of clubs, whether they be robotics or intramural sports, and make sure that every kid is, has connections made through this process as they move through schools. Yaoklades kind of had a different set of transitional things to consider, namely with realignment and the sixth grade having class-size room infrastructure. Yaoklades has had class sizes of this size ranging from 17 per class in pre-K, 24 to 23 in second and third, and then 27 in fourth grade, and that's split across two classrooms. But some considerations would be that not all class sizes are created equal, and to, as Yaoklades has accommodated that class size in the past, they've strategically moved those grades along to have the bigger rooms. And that would be something that they would want to consider with ALO moving to Bradford. Just those considerations would need to be made in ensuring that each class has the proper-sized classroom at Yaoklades. The other thing would be making sure that there's enough tier-three support, that there's just not, in this realignment, a grade band or grade that has a higher number of tier-three students. Because right now, the numbers are spread evenly so that the amount of staff at Yaoklades adequately covers that intervention, because they pull those students in groups of three to five, so they would want to keep that target size for small groups.
All right, these are little writings and from the kids at each different grade. The teachers kind of just asked them and what they thought of the school, how they felt, and I'm going to be reading them to you. I'm not going to mention any names, I'll just go down through of what they said. The K through 2 are favorite things about Swan Meadow School. Learning and having fun. My teacher makes it fun. My teacher helps me be smart. I like to be here with my teacher and my friends. I like my teacher. She helps me learn things. She makes it fun. I learned to read at school. My teacher helped me. I can now read to my brother. We do fun trips. I like numbers and math. It is fun to learn math at my school. My teacher helps me. If I need to help, if I need help, I can tell her. My favorite thing is seeing my teacher. I love her. She teaches me lots of things. I really like desert animals. Last week they learned about desert animals. I love seeing and playing with my friends. My teacher fixes my boo-boos. I love her. I like doing reading groups. I like when my friends read to me. I like my teacher. I really like when she wears her fuzzy boots.
I love Swan Meadow School because we feel so united. I love the small classrooms and how we are put together. Swan Meadow School is my favorite, is my family. Together, we reach out to the community. On Valentine's Day, we take love gifts to old people and people who have lost loved ones. These gifts are usually money, fruit baskets, and Valentine's Day cards made by Swan Meadow students. And their extra time, the, the money and the money for the fruit come from money donated by Swan Meadow families and by the Harvest Sale fundraiser for the school. Together, we invite the community and have an auction with items donated from different families in the community. We do this because we care about our school. It has good teachers, nice teachers, nice friends. It's not too big or small. Big playground, all the fun things they do. So please, don't shut down my school. The reason Swan Meadow is the best school ever is that even though Swan Meadow is small, it's amazing. I've been in three different schools, and Swan Meadow by far is my favorite school. So don't close Swan Meadow. Swan Meadow School is amazing. The teachers are nice, and even though it's a small school, it doesn't mean that it's a bad school. Out of all the schools I have been to, this school is the only school that doesn't have violence and that doesn't have teachers that hit you and blame you for something you didn't do. I love how the teachers take their time out of their lives to help me get a good grade when they could be at home baking cookies. Another thing I love about Swan Meadow School, which is the only school that is caring, sweet, and kind all the time. I also like how the holidays, the whole school gathers around and does something nice for us. I love how we get to do things for the community. Please keep Swan Meadow School open. It's amazing. SOS, save our school. We have to keep the school open. We love our school. We love it because of the people and the interaction with the community. Also, the school is small. That way, everyone gets noticed and cared about, not ignored. The people get to know each other since it's not a huge school. The school also does stuff with the community. Anyway, we love our school. Also, the school has history. A lot of people in the community went to this school when they were little, so this school means a lot to the community. So keep our school open. If we don't keep the school open, a lot of us kids won't have anywhere to go to school because they're not going to go to a big public school. So if you shut down the school, then a lot of the kids will have to do homeschool. So please, keep the school open. I love Swan Meadow in so many ways. The teachers are great. I love the littleness of the school and that you know everybody. I also love the idea of having three grades in one classroom. One of the best things about this school is the environment. I also love the things we do for the community around us, like the Harvest Sale and love gifts. How much the community is involved in this school is awesome.
So for a summary, Garrett County Public Schools Annotated Code of Maryland, Education 4-101 and 4-109. Garrett County Board of Education is responsible for maintaining a system of public schools that is designed to provide educational opportunities for all children. Our vision: The Garrett County Public School System maintains an environment in which staff, students, parents, and the community work collectively for a brighter tomorrow. While celebrating the cultures, culture and tradition of Garrett County, the schools create an environment where students are nurtured to become productive, enthusiastic, and successful members of society. Partnerships are integral to building a culture of rigorous, high-quality instruction in which excellence in student achievement is normative and ensures learning and success for all students. Community contributions are encouraged and valued. Partnerships support tangibly the innovation and creativity embedded in the school system and will energize the achievement of all students. By closing Swan Meadow School, the Garrett County Public Schools System will deny the Amish-Ibendanite community access to a free public education because of their family values and beliefs. Finally, with so many unanswered questions and inconclusive information, it has been difficult to make an informative, informed definitive, definitive decision on Swan Meadow School closing. The transparency we were promised has instead been mixed, delayed, and partial communication. Without accurate numbers to calculate the funding, we have been unable to show a reasonably educated guess on the sustainability of Swan Meadow. We can say with certainty that the Garrett County Public Schools System will lose an additional 35 students in the 2023 and 2024 school year, which will increase the deficit in funding now and in the future for the whole school system. That's if Swan Meadow gets, gets closed. Our children are our future, and we are responsible to give them the best education possible. Please take that charge seriously and see the children individually and not as a dollar amount. In closing, Philippians 4:8. Finally, brothers and sisters, whatever is true, whatever is noble, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable, if anything is, is excellent or praiseworthy, think about such things. Thank you. We'd like to offer our thanks, the Board and Superintendent, to all of you who served on the committee. I'm sure you put a lot of hours into it, and we certainly do appreciate it, the effort that you have, have put into it, and the findings and your insight, because that's why we're here, is to understand your insight into what you feel are the proponents of keeping Swan Meadow alive. And certainly, the Board will look at all of those issues as we make a decision. What we're going to do now is transition into the public comment session. Those of you who have signed the cards will be called up to speak. And we do ask that you try to limit it to three minutes, but I'm certainly not going to stop you in the middle of your sentence either. So, you know, try, try to adhere to that as much as possible. It looks like we've got about a dozen people who want to speak, and we certainly want to hear each of you. Right, yeah. Before I do that, I need to go to the ground rules of, of public speaking as pertains to Board of Education policies and procedures. In an effort to provide an environment of effective public comment, Board of Education meetings or public hearings, the Garrett County Board of Education has adopted the following protocols for public comment. Key points of the guideline include any person wishing to address the board must fill out a speaker's card. The card will include the speaker's name, contact information, topic he or she wishes to address. Each speaker shall be allotted up to three minutes for the statement. At the discretion of the Board President prior to the beginning of the meeting, the time limit may be changed to accommodate the number of speakers. Speakers do not address the board's staff, or not to address the board's staff concerning specific personnel issues at the meeting. A speaker will be immediately stopped from talking further if he or she speaks on a personnel issue. Such issues should be addressed to using the district's established procedures of sharing concerns with school personnel and, if necessary, brought to the board's attention in private. While the board does not directly respond to a speaker during public comment, the board may address speakers in the following manner. The Board President may make clarifying remarks at the end of the public comment session. The Board of Education may send a written follow-up to a speaker to respond to his or her comment of question. So that being said, those are the things that we must adhere to as a part of our board policy. So once again, certainly feel free to tell us your thoughts and ideas and concerns so that we can document those as we move forward. Michelle Hetrick is our first speaker.
You guys might recognize me from last night. I was at Route 40. I am actually here to stand for all the community's small schools in the area. My experiences personally are with Route 40, of which I'll be speaking tonight. Even though these schools are on opposite sides of the county, I feel our pain as the parents and community of Swan Meadow are the same. We're all dealing with the same pain and suffering that we have to deal with and decisions. So with that, I've lived in Finsel my entire life, but for the past 10 years, I've lived in Grantsville. I am in the Grantsville District. However, I send my kids out of district so my child can go to Route 40 because I love that school so much and everything that comes with it. I went to Route 40, and now my daughter is currently in third grade. Mrs. Smith and Mr. Deloney, both who spoke last evening, were my principal and teacher. Mrs. Bolden was my teacher, and she actually was able to teach my daughter as well and is currently still a teacher there. Have you thought about not only the huge impacts, huge things being impacted and lost with such huge changes, but looked at the small stuff too? Look at the Valentine's parties, the PJ parties, the pizza parties, the multiple trips to Camp Pickery that Route 40 takes. That is such a great foundation, and I feel like that those are not going to continue with these changes. What about the garden values? Route 40 plants a garden every year, just as Swan Meadow. They use the fruits and vegetables for their lunches. Not only that, but each grade gets to implement something into the garden, planting and weeding and anything that comes with a garden. They get those experiences. Without that, they won't have those experiences, and these are life skills that you use every single day. I now grow garden, and my daughter can help me because she has the experience. Have you thought about the decisions that you're putting on families? Have you thought about those children in split households? Have you thought about the decisions that you're being, have you, I'm sorry. Have you thought about those children in split households and how these decisions can be detrimental to a family because you're making a parent choose between their children's education and having their children physically live with them? Which isn't any decision a parent should have to make. I personally have to make this decision. We decided to keep our child in Allegheny County because of this. Because of these changes, we can't, we can't wait for a decision to be made. We have to decide now because of personal reasons. If these changes are implemented, you can guarantee on losing another student, which is my daughter. I will either pay out of district costs, or I will homeschool her. I have already homeschooled her two years of her schooling, and I will do it again. And I know many that others will follow. I have implemented a county-wide homeschool group that I am willing to help many other families do, and I have a plan in place. So with that, I hope that you make the correct decision in keeping these community schools open as they are a foundation of our community. Thank you.
You can call me sweet. It's actually, it's actually squid, but that's a little embarrassing. Well, thanks for being, you know, so thoughtful. First, I would like to thank you guys for your time and thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I would like to praise our school, Swan Meadow. We're a military family, so I'm not speaking nostalgically, but it really is an exceptional school. Our kids have been into other schools, both private and public, and never have I experienced such open lines of communication from teachers, never such community involvement, which we went over, and never such awareness of the individual educational needs of each child. Mrs. Lance already hit on this, but really, her having the kids for nine years makes such a big difference in tailoring, working with the parents and tailoring specific educational paths for both of my kids. And all of the teachers, really, they have them for three years, so they really know the kids, they know the parents, and they communicate really well in making really well in making plans for the kids. Um, I think my fundamental issue that I would address would be, um, the lack of parental control. I feel like there's a waning parental control when you limit the options that parents have for sending their kids to schools. Um, I think just around the country, more kids are homeschooling, we already talked about that. In national news, I think parents are getting a little frightened by the lack of parental involvement and key decisions for kids' education. Locally, we have an issue where the majority of parental opinion is against school closure, and to ignore this, I think, would appear to be following the national trend. When we lived on the West Coast before COVID, um, public schools provided more options for schools outside of the traditional brick and mortar. There were hybrid charter schools, we had fully virtual charter schools, and I honestly, I can't think of any other families that I knew that homeschooled their kids. Um, because there were just more choices, and that means more control for parents. Like many in Garrett County, I would prefer to send my kids to a school so they can receive the advantages of well-trained staff and the social motivational benefits of other students. We do have the resources to homeschool or go private, which is what we plan to do if Swan Meadow is closed. I think, um, I wanted to say too, uh, Calvary, I'm sure you guys know, just opened a private school, which is another option, and, um, our kids are on the waiting list. I know there are like forty-five kids on the waiting list right now, so it's just, I, I just think it would be really beneficial for the public school system to have some more options open. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Crystal. Uh, Linda Bradley.
Good evening. Um, thank you again for listening to all my comments about Swan Meadow. I've spoken before, the school board, a few times, and written emails. I am Linda Bradley, a resident of Garrett County. I am actually a retired media specialist who worked in Prince George's County Public Schools for twenty-one years. And so, um, schools and the education issue are near, endure to my heart, and I'm sorry I'm getting so upset tonight, but after hearing the testimony of all the students at Swan Meadow and all the teachers and all the statistics, it has really affected me tonight more than at other school board meetings. But I believe that the closing of Swan Meadow would have a detrimental effect all over the whole county economically and demographically. In the past, um, a couple of Republican newspapers, there were, um, articles that referenced DEI issues, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And, um, some of these articles included, um, an article about the commissioners' meeting where workforce, housing, and county development were discussed, the blueprint plan for schools, an article about preserving and honoring our history by renovating the drain house, and, um, an article about, about the Black History Month presentation at the Historical Museum in Oakland. And all these relate to diversity in some way. Keeping Swan Meadow open will preserve diversity, and it will benefit economic development as we attract businesses and new, and new residents. I'm afraid that, um, as we continue to close schools, we won't be able to attract businesses, which is one of the, um, the missions, I believe, in Garrett County, and people won't wanna move here if the schools continue to close. Please reread all my emails if you have time and comments that your office should have on file. Please especially reread my email of Friday, March third. Please, even at this late hour in the decision-making progress, uh, process, see the far-reaching effects of closing Swan Meadow, and please discuss these issues and some alternatives with the DEI Committee and the commissioners. Just today, on the Garrett County Public Schools website, I saw that Lori Walker, computer science teacher at Northern High School, was presented an award by Board of Education member Jason Vensicle. And the certificate reads, AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award. I called the school today but was unable to get any information on exactly what this was for. Is it for a female teacher in the computer science field? In any event, it's telling that the concept of diversity is featured in Garrett County today. Diversity is a big issue, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot if we close Swan Meadow, which is the most diverse school in the county. As we have seen, those school, those students will not go to other schools to make those schools more diverse. Cultural and historical diversity is just as important as other types of diversity. And, um, Swan Meadow's unique community deserves to be preserved because it brings much-needed cultural diversity and a lot of other, um, good things to our community, as you have heard in our county schools. One more item of importance, I just found out today, and I think Ms. Lance talked about this. Swan Meadow is now one of three five-star schools in the county, as determined by the latest, um, MSDE report card that just came out today. And that's determined by our test scores, I believe. The other ones are Northern Middle School and Accident Elementary, so for, for that reason alone, that's one big reason to consider keeping Swan Meadow open. And thank you for all your time and all your hard work to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Our next speaker is Jonathan Yoder.
So different people have asked, um, you know, why are you not sending your child to another public school? Uh, some people have expressed disbelief that it will actually happen. Uh, and so I wrote up a, a, a bit of a, a letter, um, explaining some of, some of those reasons, uh, and I'm gonna read a part of that here. To whom it may concern, as a Mennonite father of a child at Swan Meadow School, this is my response to why my child will not move to a bigger public school. Our roots go back to the Reformation period in the fifteen and sixteen hundreds, when because of religious conviction, there was a breaking away from the Catholic Church. Men Osimons and Jacob Alman, hence the Mennonite and Amish names, were two among others that rose to leadership in the new Anabaptist Church. Many Anabaptists lost their lives because they stood for what they believed the Bible taught. One of the principles they believed in was separation of church and state. In the nineteen seventy-two court case, Wisconsin versus Jonas Yoder, the United States Supreme Court ruled that the parent's fundamental right to freedom of religion was determined to outweigh the state's interest in educating their children. The implications of the case for the Amish are that all states must grant the Amish the right to establish their own schools, should they choose to do so, or to withdraw from public institutions after completing eighth grade. In our community, Amish parents have continued to send their children to public school, Swan Meadow. Swan Meadow, as we know it, was built in nineteen fifty-eight. The original school was built mostly by Gortner community members, a large percentage of whom were Amish. The Amish community established a great working relationship with the Board of Education. The property the school was built on was sold to the Board of Education in three different parcels at different times by an Amish family, the Schwarzentriebers, for ten dollars per parcel. The Gortner community and the Amish-Mennonite community in particular have been very active in the ongoing maintenance and construction projects from the time the school was built all the way up to now. Examples are the school additions, playground, the new roof that was just done, uh, the removal of the trees, uh, beside the school. Most of the Amish communities have opted to create their own schools where their children attend through eighth grade. At Swan Meadow, because of the relationship with the Board of Education, we have continued to send our children to a public school, and we view it as our school. Many of the Amish-Mennonite children at Swan Meadow do choose to continue their education beyond eighth grade and do so in a homeschool or private school setting. Swan Meadow has produced many productive citizens over the years, professors, nurses, pilots, carpenters, mechanics, electricians, computer programmers, farmers, chefs, and the list could go on and on. Swan Meadow is located centrally in our Amish community. We live in close proximity to the school, which enables us to be aware and involved in what is happening there. If our children are taken from our community for schooling, we cannot continue to keep in touch like we do now. I believe that ultimately, parents are responsible for the education of their children. For many years, the Board of Education and the Amish parents have had a good working relationship with enough common goals to work together in educating our children. I don't think it is the best interest of my child to send her to a bigger public school outside of my community. Our ancestors faced intense persecution and death for what they believed in. How can I do less? Since Wisconsin versus Yoder in nineteen seventy-two, many of our communities have created their own schools. I, we, are prepared to move forward with options other than sending our child to a bigger public school if Swan Meadow School is closed by the Board of Education. Respectfully, Jonathan Yoder. And I would like to add that I, I want to thank all of you, the Board of Education, uh, Superintendent of Schools, not just this, this, uh, administration, but, but historically, um, we have, we have enjoyed a, a long ride, and I hope it doesn't end here, but, uh, but if it does, so be it, and I, I pray that God will give you wisdom in the decisions you make.
Thank you, Jonathan. Our next speaker is Becky Heath.
Good evening. Um, I'm Becky Heath, retired teacher from the Garrett County Board of Education and former teacher at Swan Meadow, taught K one and two. So, good evening, Garrett County Board of Education, central staff, and elected board members. I'm grateful for this opportunity to speak publicly about my desire to see Swan Meadow School remain open to staff, students, their families, and their friends. Swan Meadow has served our county as a place where students can learn and give back to Swan Meadow's students receive a quality, traditional education from qualified teachers who daily invest in the individual student. For decades, the majority of students at Swan Meadow excel, and they go on to live productive lives with a positive impact on our community. And for those students who did not excel, they received quality intervention that was both rigorous and thorough so that they too could achieve their highest potential. The Swan Meadow community is made up of God-honoring people who support their community school generously. Swan Meadow's population is comprised of students with varying backgrounds, strong conservative values, and a genuine respect for all. Why wouldn't we want a school like Swan Meadow to keep its doors open? You may think that the implementation of the blueprint will not allow community schools such as this one to remain open. If this is the case, then how inclusive is the blueprint? Implementation of the blueprint will be a financial burden on our county, but let's not lose sight of our purpose. We are educating students to be our replacements in the future. Let's be wise stewards. I will pray for you, for those in authority making this decision, to make a decision that will lead to a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and honesty. I strongly believe education needs to return to the basics, with instruction and review being the focus, and teaching students to have good character, including patriotism, respect, and moral absolutes. I believe community schools are best for students. Students learn best where strong relationships are made. Swan Meadow School is a shining example of relationships that last and that build a community stronger. I am asking the board to keep Swan Meadow School open. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Becky. Our next speaker is Jane Camfield.
I'm here. My son went to Swan Meadow, and I haven't talked about this to many people. I moved home in two thousand eighteen, when my husband died, and Jared's father, he was eleven. Without Swan Meadow, I don't believe Jared would have went away. He'd be quitting school, I would be fighting him. He wasn't doing well. He stayed back a year when we moved here. He was mentally not well. He, Ms. Lance and Connie, I hope, took more and more time with him. He needed that so much. Um, his dad died in July, I had open-heart surgery in January, I wasn't a lot of help at that point. I did all I could, but Jared really wouldn't be in school at this point. We'd been in public school, he didn't do well, we were in Bible school. We homestuck, he needed some help. Now he's in ninth grade at Southern, he's excelling. He's in J, R O J T, and he loves it. He's, um, doing very, very well, and now he says, Mom, I'd have never made it if it wasn't for Mrs. Lance. The small classes, the mental health, the things that students get there that they don't get in other schools. There are kids in this county that have to have those things, that they're not getting in bigger schools. He's not Amish, but this was a great place for him, so much love and compassion and one-on-one time that he got in these smaller classrooms. I don't know what else to say, but Jared wouldn't be at Southern High School, there'd be a tremendous fight right now to keep him there if he had not had Swan Meadow when we moved home. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Our next speaker is Gloria Yoder.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Gloria Yoder. I did not grow up in the Pleasant Valley community, so my thoughts, um, come a little bit from a different experience. Um, when I investigated Swan Meadow as an option for my child's education, I was very skeptical. Um, my confidence in the public school system was very low, and what I found in Swan Meadow School, um, was a small school with a strong sense of community and the ability to care for my child's individual needs and education. The Pleasant Valley community, to me, seems to be a tight-knit place, and I think partly because of the school. People from many different walks of life come together for school as well as social activities, and if Swan Meadow closes, no longer will there be the common thread of education to hold the community together. From my experience, and from what you've heard several testimonies of tonight, more is not better. You can have the same teacher-student ratio in a large school as in a small one. You may have programs to help the disadvantaged, you may have a plan in place to control the misbehaved. However, a large classroom will be dominated by a few, creating a mediocre environment where some will not survive, much less thrive, to academic and social excellence. There is a growing concern among parents across the nation about what is being taught in the public school system. The Pleasant Valley community is no different. COVID-nineteen proved to be a catalyst in realizing that there are other good curriculums to educate our children. I have been both a teacher's aide in a private school as well as a homeschool mom, and I am prepared to replace the individualized attention Swan Meadow School is able to provide with a better option than sending my child into a larger school. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Our next speaker is Tim Schwarzentrieber.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for the opportunity to share our concerns. I'm a parent at Swan Meadow School. We currently have three children there, including one blind son. Uh, they are fourth-generation Swan Meadow students. My grandfather went to the old Swan Meadow School years ago. My dad was in school when the new Swan Meadow School was built, um, and I obviously went there myself. Swan Meadow has been a huge part of the community in times past, in history. The community has been a huge part of Swan Meadow, vice versa. Uh, the community has, I know when the new Swan Meadow School was built, the community did a lot of that. I, I wasn't there, but in my time, I know, I remember when the addition was built, the community was there. I was, I helped, I was in school at the time. Uh, more recently, we, we helped with the roof project. Um, the community has been a huge part of Swan Meadow. I would like to a, say amen to a lot of what we've heard. There's obviously a lot of good reasons to keep Swan Meadow. There's obviously a lot of good reasons to keep Swan Meadow open. In the event that you would close Swan Meadow School, you are the elected board, you make the decision, and I want to respect that. If you decide to close Swan Meadow School, we as parents have decided that our children will not go, they will not be transferred to Ya'aklade's for a lot of reasons. I won't go into detail. I think you've heard those reasons. We will choose an alternative. I think we as a Christian community realize that as society veers further and further into left field, there will come a time when we can no longer be part of the public school system. Maybe that time is now. I don't know. At the end of the day, each one of us is responsible for the decisions we make, us as parents, for the education of our children, you as a board, for the decisions you make. You know, we are responsible for that, ultimately to God in eternity. There's a lot I could say. We've heard a lot of reasons, and I guess I just have one thing that I would like to say yet. If you decide to close Swan Meadow School, there's many reasons not to, but if you would decide to close Swan Meadow School, I would request that you please consider returning Swan Meadow School and the property to the community who has built it and donated it. Consider it. Thank you. Make a wise decision.
Tim, I will do one clarification. All buildings in Garrett County belong to the county government. They do not belong to the school board. All schools belong to the county government. Our next speaker is Michael Yoder.
My wife and I, both being former students of Swan Meadow, anticipated sending our kids to Swan Meadow as well, so it goes without saying it would be a big disappointment if it closes. I would like to mention, we would not send our children to a public school system. We would seek other options. And also, this is restating some, but historically, Swan Meadow has been a big cross-cultural platform, and it'd be very sad to see that leave. I think often, maybe what's done for a community socially, the health of the social part of community often doesn't look right financially, so I guess I would just ask that you consider the implications this has even in 20 to 50 years from now. And lastly, I'm saying this a bit ignorantly, but it feels like there's not, at least this is post-COVID, enough time given for Swan Meadow to bounce back. I know the numbers were struggling even pre-COVID, but COVID obviously had its, took its toll. As the saying goes, you can destroy something in a moment, COVID being that, but it takes a lot longer to rebuild, so I think years to rebuild is more accurate. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about Swan Meadow School, where I was the classroom teacher of grades 6 through 8, the middle school for 27 years. Swan Meadow School, founded in 1892, was 100 years old when I started, and it has now been sending graduates into the world to be effective, culturally sensitive, and well-educated citizens for 131 years. I have always believed Garrett County public schools are excellent because of the people, young and not so young. I have met as a teacher and as the mother of a Garrett County Schools graduate, but none has matched the experience at Swan Meadow that has transformed my life and my family's life, and for which we are forever grateful. This is an extraordinary community, and I believe that this school must remain open. This is an extremely important part of our county. It's an extremely important part of our state. It's a region. It's an Appalachian region, and to deny having a school that embraces this community would be tragedy. Speaking of excellence, how about today's marvelous news of Swan Meadow School's five-star school rating in today's issuing of the Maryland Report Card from the Maryland State Department of Education? That's five out of five stars. Thank you. Swan Meadow School is one of three schools in Garrett County with Accedent Elementary, and their principal is right there, and she was our principal too at one time. Thank you, Jessica. And Northern Middle to earn the five-star status, and it is a great credit to our whole school system that the rest of our schools earned four-star status, which Swan Meadow School had earned with its previous rating. What does a rating of five stars mean? Besides that Swan Meadow Elementary classrooms are in the 85th percentile, and the middle school classroom places Swan Meadow in the 97th percentile of Maryland schools. I also want to say that with the presentation you have heard this evening and will read, prepared, you can be sure with countless hours of the greatest care, I urge you to postpone the decision for closing Swan Meadow School or Route 40 Elementary School until after a new superintendent has been selected. The stakes are too high. If there is a possibility, the successor will be able to find a way with the Garrett County Board of Education, Garrett County Board of Commissioners, Garrett County Department of Economic and Community Development, the Workforce Housing Coalition, and amazing students and parents and administrators to meet the challenges that our school system now faces. If you believe it takes a village to raise a child, then Swan Meadow's community has got to be one of the best you could choose for helping to raise your child. Students learn and excel in their academics and in also having empathy for fellow human beings. Staff work with parents and the Garrett County Board of Education and the superintendent to discover each child's individual needs, meet them, and help develop each child's individual gifts. In this village, Swan Meadow students become healthy, mature citizens who contribute to our society in meaningful, effective ways, celebrating our agrarian roots, cultural diversity, and our Appalachian heritage. They are Swan Meadow School's gift to our county, our state, our country, and our world. Please keep Swan Meadow's story in mind as you deliberate our future. Please remember that the working relationships between generations of Swan Meadow's PTO, Commissioners of Garrett County, Garrett County Boards of Education, Superintendents of Garrett County Public Schools, students, staff, parents, and the community have been important to Swan Meadow's success for 131 years, and they are essential now. The Swan Meadow community hopes it will continue and grow stronger. We are all part of this village together, raising the future. And I would also like to say thank you, Mrs. Baker, for your years of teaching and leadership, and I hope you'll have a very happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Our next speaker is Cheryl Smith.
Hello. I'm Cheryl Smith, and I'm a reading tutor at Swan Meadow. Our K-2 teacher, Mrs. Melissa Durst, gave her kids a writing assignment that was called, "If I Had $100." This is the response by Aiden Friend, who is a first grader. He said, "If I had $100, I would help pay the bills. I want to help people." That's the type of students that we have at Swan Meadow.
Thank you, Cheryl. Our next speaker is Arlene Lance.
I wish you wouldn't have saved me till last. I was doing pretty good till I heard all that. I ask you to focus on what is best for our students and our community. I've been so blessed to work and be welcomed into this loving community the past 23 years. It's with great joy that I look out and see so many of my former students and current students. They're raising beautiful families in this community and returning them for me to teach. Many of them have started successful businesses and have remained in this community and helped Garrett County thrive because of their connections with Swan Meadow School. Connections that go 131 years. I challenge each of you once again, before you make a decision on closures and grade band decisions, to look deeper into the finances. It just doesn't add up. When you take losing almost $400,000 in revenue, how does that outweigh the extra expense of $132,000 to keep this school open? And we would welcome those 400 homeschoolers out there in Garrett County into our school. If you guys would look at the, you know, the out-of-area transfer and policy, put homeschooling on there for a reason, to come into this school. I also challenge each of you to spend time in each of these schools. Come out and substitute. I'll write lesson plans for you. I'll let you work with these kids and see their excitement for learning. They teach me something every day, and I just, I love being there with these kids and working with them. I've got a grandchild on the way too, and I just pray that this school stays open so I can take my grandkids to this school every day. So dig into your finances. Look at some alternatives. This community has worked with you for 131 years, and I know, I know in my heart, they will continue to work with you and do what it takes to keep this amazing school open. Thank you, and God bless each of you, and God bless each of my Swan Meadow families that I love so dearly.
Thank you, Arlene. Our final speaker is Michael Henderson.
Last one, tough act to follow. Now, I've kind of lost myself here. Okay. Swan Meadows represents rounding numbers, roughly 1% of the school population, also 1% of the budget. The school system is big enough that it can lose 1%, and it won't make a difference one way or the other, except at Swan Meadow. The whole purpose of the Garrett County Board of Education, the whole purpose of the system, is to provide schools for the children. Garrett County has something that I've not seen anywhere else in Maryland or anywhere else in the state or any other state I've been in, and that is teachers who smile when they teach. Parents that are passionate about their schools. Everywhere else, I see indifferent drones that go through the motions, and here there is a life and vitality that's at risk. This is something we cannot afford to lose. I can't top that.
We have a last-minute addition. Familiar to our faces. Ms. Rinker?
Yes. There's one thing I thought I might have heard this evening, and I don't remember hearing anybody say. Many, many years ago, maybe 30, 35 years ago, around that timeframe, I remember when there was children, maybe, that were misbehaving in their school, discipline problems, other situations, they were referred to go to Swan Meadow School, and I remember that. They would go there, and I don't know, I don't want to say got straightened up, but got on the right track, and then I believe sometimes they went back to their other school. So I'm not sure when that changed. What I want to talk about this evening, I'm saying through the eyes of the community. Mine is more about dates, facts, the things that I think are important on the eyes of how the people at Swan Meadow see it, the community. I believe in June of 2014, there was a school attendance area committee report given. It was held at Southern Middle School. The final recommendation, they would revisit the following year on Swan Meadow, and I believe they had stated, I didn't get my notes to look, but I believe it was around 44 students. They were told at that time they needed to stay in the school to keep it open. And it also talked about their district, their border, and I don't remember it being brought back in 2015 as it was said that it would be done. And I do realize we have different people sitting in different positions at center office. In October 2017, at a Garrett County Board of Education meeting, the Swan Meadow community came during public comment, they gave a presentation concerning their district border, and they was requesting that they actually have one. They still weren't given one that was specific to Swan Meadow School. In March of 2018, Swan Meadow Area Attendance Review was given, and I do believe it was in that documentation, the students had the option, if you revisit it, that they could either go to Ya'aklade's or Swan Meadow. It wasn't, like, Ya'aklade's basically had a district, but Swan Meadow, again, did not, and it stated, and I believe that's the only schools in our county where students can either go to, have an option to go to two schools. And I hope that holds true, that, like they were saying, the one road that is beside Swan Meadow, like it states, that is Ya'aklade District. So when you look at your out-of-area transfers, I would hope that anybody that would be in that area, basically Ya'aklade, that they wouldn't have to get an out-of-area transfer to go to Swan Meadow. And then in 2020, there was a five-year strategic plan, and if you remember, we had a lot of meetings for that, there was committees, and we was represented. I do believe there was a couple that was on the committee that was in the Swan Meadow area, and they actually came and spoke at several of the meetings or in public comment. So the Swan Meadow community is always paying attention. In June of 2021, there was an informal return-to-learn check-in with the Swan Meadow community, that's the title of it. It was held here at Pleasant Valley Community Center. It was a lot of discussions, and yes, it was after the COVID, but I do remember something that multiple people would ask, "How many students do we need to have to keep our schools open?" And there was never a number given. And I do believe there was a comment too about, again, the border, the district, whatever word you want to use, for Swan Meadow to have their own border, district area, and they never actually got one that was dedicated only to Swan Meadow School. And to back that up, when you look in the Facilities Master Plan, the most current one, 2022, toward the back of the book, there is a page, it is a proposed Swan Meadow border. It's the only school that has that in there, proposed. It doesn't say, the word's proposed, so that's the key word. And another thing that I think is important too, the state rate of capacity. Everybody knows how it works, what the state says, the suggested amount, the number of students per classroom, depends on your square footage, your number of classes, multiple things. For the longest time, Swan Meadow's state rate of capacity was 69, and then I do believe it was in the year 2019, the number jumped to 91, which there were some other schools the number had jumped. It wasn't only Swan Meadow. And then eventually, the number did come down, but at that time... And then eventually the number did come down, but at that time, when that number increased, it made it look like the school was very underutilized. So again, the number had changed, the school wasn't added any square footage, no rooms were changed. So I guess what's important here is we teach our children to be transparent, be honest. So it goes to, when I think of those two words, so to the Swan Meadow community, they never have gotten an actual border that has been requested for multiple years, and yes, there was a state rate of capacity number which has fluctuated, but they have asked repeatedly, what is enrollment number that is critical, important to keeping the Swan Meadow School open? And to my knowledge, they have never received one. I know I went my three minutes, and my final thing is, is I hear this so much in the community, you know me, I like to say what I hear in the community because I think it's very important, because you don't always hear it on the other side of the table. Not everyone, but many people feel that this is already a done deal. We're just going through the process, it's a formality, and we're following what Coen Morris says. So keep that in the back of your minds. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you Monica. Okay, I'm going to lead you down the path of what's next. Next Tuesday, we will have our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. The superintendent will give to the elected board her recommendation on, separately on each school, a recommendation on Route 40 and a recommendation on Swan Meadow. The board will take those recommendations under advisement. We encourage you to use our information portal on our website if you want to send messages, concerns that perhaps were not raised tonight, you're more than welcome to do that. You're more than welcome to send each of us an email. We read every one of them, and we take every one of them seriously. During that month's time, we will certainly look at all the information that we've been given, I'm sure multiple times, and the Board of Education in the April meeting will revisit that recommendation by the superintendent with an action item. Obviously, the difficulty that we now are in is we're doing two very important things at the same time. Although we do a lot of important things every month, we are also searching for a new superintendent, as all of you know. So we will take that in advisement as well as we move forward, but that's the path that we are on. Certainly, I think all of you who pay attention know that this path was greatly brought about by a new state educational law called the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. The blueprint does change everything that every school in the state of Maryland must now do. It is the law, the things that we must do. We have no choice in that. So those kinds of things really have an impact on all of our schools in Garrett County, all of our schools. So in saying that, I want to end by saying one thing, and I said this to Route 40 last night. We so much, very much appreciate your courtesy, your friendliness, your professionalism, your understanding. I don't think any of the five of us when we ran for the Board of Education ever thought this would be what we would be doing several years later. But it is a difficult decision, it's one that we must make in terms of, do we try to move forward with our footprint as it is, or do we try to change the footprint? But it is refreshing to know that I live in a county now for 40-some years. I think, somebody told me if I lived here 50 years, I got to become a Garrett Countyan. So I got to, I'm 73 years old, I got to hurry, so I would like to die a Garrett Countyan. So it's refreshing to live here, it just truly is. You know, I watch the news every day, as you do. Some of these Board of Education meetings are not like this, and people yell, scream, point, threaten, et cetera. It's nice to know that we're dealing with families that understand we're doing the very best we can for every child in Garrett County. So thank you for coming, we appreciate it. Superintendent, do you have anything you want to add about, oh yeah, about the food?
Right.
Yes. Should never forget the food. There will be food for us, and certainly invite each of you to stay. The last thing that I want to say is not only are we losing our superintendent, but we're also losing our most senior board member. Dr. Reverend Paul, as most of you perhaps know, has been reassigned. I have lost my minister. I have lost my Board of Education cohort. He is going to Bridgeport, West Virginia, to a very substantial church that is a very good promotion for Matthew. We're very proud of him for that promotion. We're very sad at St. Paul's. We don't know what we're going to do without him, but God will have a plan. So Matthew, on behalf of the board, he is our historical person. He's been through this before, so he's the person that helps guide us in what we're doing. With that said, are there any other comments by board members? Certainly have anything anyone wants to say? Yeah, we're going to ask Matthew.
I would thank everyone as well.
It's at Northern High School. Yeah, it's at Northern High School. The executive session starts at 2:45, public session 6:00 p.m. So we will hopefully see some of you at Northern, and then the following week and following month in April, it will be at Southern High School. Is it Southern High School or Southern Middle? We decided.
Southern High School, I thought. We will publicize it.
We're not real sure which one we're going to do. We don't think that far ahead. Okay, with that being said, Matthew, you've been asked to give the blessing on our food, if you would not mind doing that as our minister in residence?
Let us pray. Oh God, we are thankful for your many blessings that you have given us. We thank you for this community, for teachers, and parents, and administrators, and especially students. We thank you, God, for the blessings that you have given us all throughout this county, and we thank you for this food that's been prepared, and we pray that you would bless the rest of our evening and conversation in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you once again. Thank you for coming.